Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call and roll?
Hallie?
Here.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. Any changes or additions, counsel, to the seating's agenda?
Yes, on the second page of the agenda. The first and second resolution, we're going to table that until, hopefully, we're going to have to have a special counsel meeting. There was a minor little thing that the tax exemption certificate did not get on the agenda, and you cannot, likely, you cannot do the two resolutions without that tax exemption certificate. So, we're going to just postpone those for tonight and maybe set a special counsel meeting later.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll table those, and when we get to that point in the agenda, counsel, we'll talk about a time this week where we can get a quick special counsel meeting in. So, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have several items. We have minutes from the May 9th council meeting, approval of minutes from the May 16th special council meeting. We have a payroll approval of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents, approval of the April finance report. We have a resolution of employment for park and rec for a pool manager, two lifeguards on a desk supervisor, resolution of employment for a street department, two, and summer help, and resolution for employment from the police department for a communications specialist, approval of a cigarette permit for ghost vape, approval of liquor license for the Elks Lodge and the Orpheum Theater, and claims in the amount of one hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, those are your consent agenda items. Any questions, counsel, regarding those? Not entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
I'm sorry, moved by Hamilton, second by Hallie? Any discussion?
I have to abstain on the May 9th council meeting. That's because I wasn't here. And so should I.
Okay.
Well, one was here.
Yeah, well, we had, we did have a quorum. It was everyone, everyone else was here. Okay, thank you. And with those abstentions, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to have the police chair on the hiring in the police department.
Yes.
You know.
Another hiring.
What does that, no, but it's a dispatch, and what does that bring us up to now, chief?
That will be our sixth person which will bring us up to full staff. We've, we had to hire two. The, as you can imagine, our two training certified trainers are exhausted from the amount of training they've had to do. They last three months each, so we've tried to stagger the fifth and sixth hiring to give them a month in between to let the one we hired last month get somewhat into training. The training takes, before they're on their own, from three to six months. And then, the bad news is, then, in July, I guess it's good news for us, bad news for them because they're going to be training again, but we'll be increasing to seven after July 1st. Then we're going to be looking at next year's overtime compared to this year's. We're hoping that seventh employee with the amount of training that we're putting into our comm specialist, that we save quite a bit of money on overtime next year.
Because that the seventh person should bring us up to full staff, then?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, that is the increase of one that was approved, that we kind of gave up the, going to the fifteenth officer, because definitely comms or dispatch center was hurting a lot worse than patrol was this last year.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with a motion, a second, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jason, keep rolling? Okay.
Yeah, it's not ready yet.
Okay, fine. So, we'll move to our resolutions and action items. We have several public hearings, counsel, to set. We should just get, go through these quickly. We'll set a public hearing for consideration of the Doyle subdivision, which is, went through planning and zoning this evening. This is a subdivision on 12th Street. So, entertain a motion to set June 13th, our first meeting in June, as a public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Next is a public hearing for the rezoning of said property. This is a FIDA property at 12th and Gere. Again, we'll be setting June 13th, 7:00 PM, for a public hearing on the rezoning.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We'll set a public hearing for consideration of an amendment for Phase 5 of the MUM subdivision plat. Again, June 13th, our next meeting. Entertain a motion to set that public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then finally, we set a public hearing for Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. Again, that'll be for our next meeting, June 13th.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. The council will move to our Grimes Avenue resurfacing project. Actually, there are several that are rolled in there. Melanie, if you would mind going through the opinion of costs for us. This is a public hearing, so we'll hear your report first and ask if there's any comment from the public.
Okay, this is for overlay of several seal coat streets. We are doing, or proposing a three-inch overlay over the streets, and it includes Grimes Avenue from Court to B, and then B to D, and then C Street from Grimes to Hemstead, and then Hemstead to Briggs. So, the intersections are not being done. Those are already concrete work. The Streets Department is going to be doing some patching in those areas as well, not as part of this project. Also, in addition to this, there are some repairs out at the airport that need to be done. These are associated with the terminal project, and the terminal contractor may or may not accept the bid. So, if they get a price that they find favorable, then we'll include this in the project. But if the airport terminal contractor decides to take that out, we'll work that out. It does note that in the specs that we can take that out if needed. We're looking at bids coming in on June 1st at eleven at City Hall. The estimated cost is one hundred and two thousand, and so this is an HMA overlay project.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Any questions regarding the specifications, counsel? I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to comment from the public. Now, we'll close the public hearing, and then your next, your action item, counsel, then would be to approve the plans and specifications for the Grimes resurfacing project along with the area on C Street and the airport.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we are going to look at a realignment of the sanitary sewer project along Libertyville Road. Melanie, I'll ask you again to lead us through that, please.
And without Doug being here, Mike, please jump in.
Absolutely.
Anytime. What you should have attached to your agenda is a very simplified map of the two alternatives that we've been looking at for the south side of Libertyville Road sewer expansion. We were originally looking at alternate one, the purple-colored line, and this took it on the backside of majority of the properties. The reason why we originally went on the backside of the properties is most of them, the septic tanks come out the backside, and this would decrease the amount of pipe each property owner would have to put in in order to connect. The other thing is that then, being in the backside, we also wouldn't have to worry about the storm sewer, other utilities, and those things as such. During the easement negotiation process, determined that the downstream property owners or the ones on the west side of the map were in favor of the project. So, in order to move the process along, we looked at a second alternative, the committee looked at the second alternative, and that's the green line on your map. This puts it along Libertyville Road. So, we do have the hurdles of being in the right of way, so there's additional cost for the pavement, possibly removing pavement. There's longer laterals for the property owners. But what this does is it puts the sewer in the road right of way so that a permanent easement is not needed for this construction, and that only temporary easements are needed from those property owners. We haven't, have not talked to the property owners yet about the temporary, but even if they aren't in favor of the project, those are easier to obtain for the court system than a permanent easement. So, this was presented to the committee. The cost of alternate two is about ten percent higher than the cost of alternate one. That includes the easement costs, the costs of, or I should, the easements being less of a cost, but it does factor into the attorney's time that it would take to get that. Also in that ten percent, it includes your next item, which is our additional costs for survey as well as easements and the design of the new alignment. I think that about covers it. And the committee voted unanimously, I believe, to go with.
To approve the alternate one.
Alternate two.
Alternate two.
Yep.
Got it.
Why? Since it's ten percent more, why, why did they decide to go?
Mike?
Sure. The easements are easier to acquire. One of the easements would require taking farm property, which in Iowa can take a substantial amount of time. And so, to avoid the farm taking, we had to look at every single alternative that was available to the city, and it is an alternative or an option for us to run the line down the existing easement, the roadway easement. We would just require temporary easement to sort of pile dirt during the project.
But this speeds up the process of this opening development to a lot of this area, the Hoffman property in particular. Those two properties I mentioned were, is what's holding up, the primary thing holding up her development, because she can't get sewer to where you guys have existing.
Right.
Will this affect how much the property owners were offered?
No.
For the original easements?
No.
Not unless their easement changes. If we're taking less of their property, they'll receive less compensation.
And then also, my understanding, too, reviewing the project with Mike, was that it did kind of release some of the, some of the property owners who were going to be resistant to involuntary annexation because of this project, and, you know, it did sort of satisfy a developer who has agreed to do a major annexation off of this as well. So, I think that our investment is going to be paid for in the long run by getting, getting access and getting this developer, you know, very positively focused on this particular area.
So, Melanie said on the west side is where more interest is for annexation or for coming into our sewer system, but it's not.
Less, less.
It's less. It's actually less.
The west end.
Okay, I misunderstood you.
Although there is a major piece on, yeah, there's a major piece on the south, but west of that, there's less, less interest. Yeah. Which is why you see the line drawn.
And it doesn't affect the north alignment at all, because there's still going to be alignment along the backside of the properties on the north side of the road.
Yes.
As well. This is a two-phase type project, north and south of Libertyville Road.
So, this isn't going to hammer the people on the north side of the road twice at the front and the back of their property, is it?
No.
Okay.
No.
Biggest impact they'll have, other than driving by it, will just be the, any disruption to traffic on Libertyville Road during this project?
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Any other questions? If not, then the first item of business would be to approve alternative to the realignment or the amendment to the original plan.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson to approve.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Need a discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revolinsky? Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Was that a no, John?
That was a yes.
That was a yes.
That was a yes.
All right, so it was unanimous. All right, then, the second item of business, then, is to consider a revised engineering services agreement with French Reniker for the additional work.
This.
In engineering, yes?
This amendment is for seventeen thousand, and it includes the change of plans, change of specifications, and revising easements for this new alternate.
Okay, so it's an increase of seventeen thousand from one hundred and forty-six thousand to one hundred and sixty-three thousand.
And this is included in the ten percent you just told us?
Yes.
Obridge?
Entertain a motion to approve the engineering services agreement?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Appreciate it. Okay, the next council, these are the two resolutions that we are going to table this evening. Would Friday at noon work for folks to have a very quick meeting to come back and approve these?
I can be here pretty soon.
I know, John, if we need you, we can get you by phone. Katie?
Yeah.
I can probably come.
Okay, Michael, so, looks like we have a quorum, and we'll check with Doug and Martha, see if they'll be available. But then, I'd like to set a motion, a motion to set Friday at noon for our meeting to reconsider these resolutions.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thanks. And then we have our final reading of the first floor projecting sign regulations, the third and final reading. It's a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to the ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask any comments from the council, anything additional?
No, I haven't heard anything from anyone about it, so I would move for approval for the third through the final reading.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Anderson. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we're going to take that report. Whether we've got computer or not, we do have a printed version, so I'd like to invite Will and Emily? Yes, from the University of Iowa, who are, you can introduce yourselves and tell us what department you're with there, and give us some background on the study that you're going to be presenting tonight.
All right, good evening. My name is Will McManus. I'll be presenting along with Emily Seifel. We're here with our professor, Dr. Anthony. We're from the University of Iowa. We'd like to thank you all for the invitation and opportunity to present tonight. We're very excited to share the work we've worked on this past three months. So, over the past three months, our team has partnered with FIDA to develop a strategy for addressing vacant parcels of land and housing needs in Fairfield with the ultimate goal of providing the city with guidance on infill housing development and creating a supply of housing that will support stable population growth. Enhanced economic development is an issue that small towns and cities all over Iowa are struggling with, and it's a difficult problem to solve. So, we're excited to be a part of Fairfield's effort to find a solution for this issue, to help the city generate infill housing, and to see Fairfield continue to move forward. So, with our presentation, I guess I'll walk you through the handouts since we don't have on screen, but we'll briefly summarize our work over the past three months and then conclude with a list of recommendations to address infill housing development in Fairfield. So, first, it'd be the first today's, I guess, handout. To create a vacant parcels database, we focus on vacant lands, not vacant homes. Thanks. So, we used a list of vacant parcels according to the Jefferson County Assessor's Office, their website, and also a list from FIDA's past inventory, which was a physical map document. However, as we discovered along the way, if a parcel of land has ever been listed as vacant on the assessor's website, it retains that status as vacant even if it's, say, has a newly built structure or occupied house on it. So, this was a bit of an issue to work through, but we were able to work through it and navigate through it over the three months of our work. So, the first map on your handout, this one here, is a map of our initial list of vacant parcels according to the Jefferson County Assessor's Office and FIDA. These are the four hundred seventy-four vacant parcels that we began with, within Fairfield city limits. Through our site visits, though, which was driving around and surveying each of these vacant parcels in Fairfield, we boiled down this list to sixty-nine, which is this map right here.
All right.
Hey! Better late than never.
Catch up. So, this map is the one of sixty-nine vacant parcels of land as verified through our site visits. So, these are what we consider to be truly vacant parcels of land without any type of built structure on them. Of these sixty-nine parcels of land, we narrowed the list further to forty-two vacant parcels of land that are prime and ready for development. So, these are the forty-two parcels that we would recommend the city and FIDA begin with or first prioritize for infill housing development. And we may have missed one or two properties along the way, but we're still confident nonetheless in the completeness of our work.
And the actual listing of those properties have been turned over to FIDA and then our city administrator already, or are we waiting on those?
Yeah, I was just about to get to that, actually. So, yeah, we've also created an Excel database for these sixty-nine parcels of land, which has comprehensive information for each of these final sixty-nine parcels. So, we'll be turning over that Excel database and these maps to FIDA. We have it on the E-drive. So, in terms of housing needs and preferences, there were a couple of main findings that stood out to us from FIDA's 2014 housing survey and research using data from the U.S. Census Bureau. So, the first kind of point that stood out to us was that community preferences in Fairfield indicate a demand for economical homes, such as duplexes, townhomes, tiny homes, or granny flats, and also reasonably priced homes in the range of ninety thousand to one hundred thirty thousand dollars. And that's really the gap that we're going for with this study, is we want to provide reasonably priced and moderately, and see the city provide these moderately priced housing for residents in Fairfield. Also, thirty-six percent of the surveyors from FIDA's study indicated an interest in building or buying a home within the next five years, which is an interesting finding. A second main study, or, excuse me, a main finding that stood out to us was that a group in Fairfield that has seen the largest increase in its cost burden status since 2000 is young homeowners, aged twenty-five to thirty-four. And cost burden just means basically that you're paying more than you can afford for housing or for rent. But overall, the most cost burdened group is owners and renters earning between twenty thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, which would be like retail office workers, office administrators, occupations like that. Also, according to the census, the vast majority of the younger workforce commutes into Fairfield, so they live outside of the city limits. They're external workers, but they come in, commute, and then will live outside the city. So, Fairfield can utilize underdeveloped lands to appeal to these emerging housing preferences and hit price points that are affordable to low-wage, entry-level workers, and also young professionals. With that, I'll turn over the presentation to Emily, who will begin with barriers to infill development.
So, even with land available and a demonstrated need, housing development is still a challenge. So, through an online questionnaire and in-person and telephone interviews with developers, as well as city and FIDA staff, we found out why. We followed up on points of consensus with our own analysis and recommendations to identify these barriers. One of the most significant challenges to infill development is the gap between the cost of new development and market prices in areas with aging, deteriorating housing stock, or otherwise low assessed values. I'll return to this in a moment, as it's a big reality for Fairfield, which has median housing values that are low for the region, and the Area 15 Planning Commission found that thirty percent of homes are in poor condition as of 2014. Developers also highlighted two additional development constraints, which are restricted zoning and lack of infill enforcement. Our team confirmed that minimum lot sizes, twice the size of other regional municipalities, and a lack of land zone for medium-density housing by right prevents developers from maximizing available land and providing some more affordable units. Past surveys and reports also find that dilapidated housing and outstanding nuisance violations prohibit neighborhood investment. The majority of developers we contacted would support a change to code and inspection in the city. Lastly, while developers show a very high awareness of existing incentives in the city, they also repeated that land and infrastructure costs can be prohibitive. So, as a result, front-end financial support was explored in our recommendations as in addition to current tax relief base policies. I'll briefly describe our four primary recommendations. The first is a land subsidy. So, for certain residential projects, the city of Fairfield could offer land as a subsidy for the development of vacant lots and consider an additional one thousand dollars per unit in infrastructure costs. This gives a front-end freshness for development and was found to be most viable for medium-density ownership units, which meet the need and preferences discussed before. Our second, our second recommendation addresses zoning. There are several options for amending the zoning code to incentivize development at less cost to the city than monetary incentives alone. Currently, as you can see perhaps from this chart, there's only one lot in our entire inventory that's zoned for multifamily development, while thirty-seven are either single-family residential or would allow for duplexes on fairly large lots. So, reducing minimum dimensions, permitting more uses by right, and offering density bonuses would be a way for developers to do more with less land. Our third policy, which is, our third recommendation, which is to implement a land bank built on the first, the subsidy, as part of a targeted long-term approach rather than a project-by-project basis. The city could purchase multiple parcels and create a bank of land to have available to offer developers in terms, in exchange for the right kind of housing development. This avoids a risk of escalating land prices and gives the opportunity of marketing land, as FIDA has shown to be successful with its request for proposal process in the northwest of towns. Lastly, changes to code enforcement and inspection regimes, as laid out in our report, are essential to a long-term approach to a development-friendly community. Failure to address, decline, and preserve new investment will lead to ongoing need for incentives and city intervention while also reducing tax, tax revenues. So, with our last few minutes, I just want to walk through, maybe, uh-oh, I'll just talk to you guys.
No, we'll have it.
Okay. It's okay, too. Go to the pages with all the charts. Walk through how the land subsidy and zoning changes can work together to impact future development in Fairfield and impact, impact tax revenues. Thank you. So, we're just going to look at a hypothetical development on what is a very real piece of land located on South Sixth Street near Prince Elementary School. So, looking at that middle column, our calculations found that assuming a one hundred dollar per square foot cost to build a home, a new fifteen hundred square foot single-family home in this neighborhood, which has homes built as early as 1890, could result in a loss of nearly forty thousand dollars, again, that gap between development costs and market prices. However, with an increase in density, that gap is significantly eroded, and a subsidy for land and one thousand dollars per unit would total eleven thousand seven hundred dollars upfront, but completely bridge the gap. So, a quadplex with units approximately eleven hundred square feet in size and sold for ownership could bring a return to the developer and provide units that are affordable to those earning thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Go to the next one.
You got control.
Okay. And then, this chart, your next chart, next page, shows that the increased tax revenue from this new development would pay back the city's upfront investment of nearly twelve thousand dollars in around three and a half years. Looking at the next six and a half years, the increased tax revenue would bring in almost twenty-four thousand dollars. And so, comparing what the undeveloped parcel would bring in, about twelve hundred dollars in ten years, it's a significant difference. So, just through this brief overview, we wanted to show how new approaches can spur development that promotes growth for the city overall and meets some tangible needs of the people who live and work in Fairfield. We would love to answer any questions that you have, and we will be putting the report in your hands soon, as there's a lot that we couldn't cover today. Thank you for dealing with the two different media approaches.
Well, thank, thank you very much. This is a, it's a great proposal, and you really drilled down to, and pointed out some things that I think we're aware of, but maybe didn't, haven't necessarily thought through the rest. the remedies. Before you ask, Darren, I was just gonna ask, can you go over the land subsidy and how that, how that works in, in other places? And is, is there some ownership that the city is taking on, on the land itself, or is it a cash subsidy towards offsetting the price of the lot?
We looked at a similar policy in Newton. Theirs was offering even an additional subsidy on top of that. I think it was $10,000 just cash advance to homeowners, and the policy we're recommending instead was a little bit more limited that and made sure, you know, it's offered in exchange for the development. And I just didn't, it, it requires the developer to still put in for infrastructure, but it shows that the city is willing to meet those needs, too.
Okay. Because with, one thing that we've, we've discussed before, there, there's a program that I know a number of cities have, generally targeted towards commercial development, and that's to have a dangerous and dilapidated account of funds where the city would come over, take over property, maybe demolish a, a building that's on there, and then resell the lot. This is, are, are they doing it in the same way where they are keeping a fund that supports that type of subsidization of actual housing or lot purchase, land purchase?
At least for our funding recommendations, which we didn't go into in this, in this report, we recommended looking at the bonding capacity for Fairfield and then looked at what the local option sales tax revenues are being allocated towards to establish some kind of fund so that you can pair those tax relief policies that are in place with being able to offer some of that upfront assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything to add?
The one, the one question that I had was of the 62 properties that you evaluated, how many of those are privately owned and how many of those are just vacant to the city?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not totally sure the, who owns all those. That information is in the Excel database, so you could definitely look that out very easily.
Okay.
I couldn't, most of them seem like they're privately owned by homeowners, or we're not sure. We're trying to, the next step is to contact these owners, determine like the asking price for the parcel or what their plans are, and to hopefully obtain them at a cheap cost.
Okay. And that was, that was where I'm coming from, because a lot of this development, if we're going to try to spur a developer to do this, those properties have to be available to them. And in many cases, some that were shown even in this presentation are privately owned and are being used for other purposes.
I also, you know, I also recognize that there were probably some on there that are sort of what I would call protective lots, somebody who owns a piece of property and doesn't want it developed.
Yeah.
So they, they essentially buy it so that it is not developed. There's, there's a little bit of that, too, but I think there are some where there is the intention to develop, it's just they haven't really found the market for it. And if it were part of a larger program, an infill program that was coupled with zoning changes that were more favorable to the types of developments you're discussing, then maybe they get some new life, some new attention.
So we're just hoping that we've kind of laid the foundation and that we'll give you a list that you can work with a little more, maybe narrow down, and yeah, find out which exact parcels we can obtain.
You know, in, in the mid-'90s, we did our last, we wrote our last comprehensive plan, and in that, we targeted infill development, and I think the number at the time was well over 100 lots. So we've made some progress, but we're in a kind of a housing crunch that we haven't been in, in, in decades, so there is, there is some new urgency to this, and we really appreciate what you've done.
And just regarding the land bank, that's something that the city could choose, certain clusters of parcels that it identifies to be ideal for development, and in that case you would be, you know, taking that proactive step to say, these are lots that we want to develop and maybe persuading some property owners in terms of this is where the city's moving and there's lots that we want to use for it.
Right. Very good. And as this, as this, this has been presented to Planning and Zoning Commission, yet hasn't. Adam, I think it'd be good to, to have a presentation to Planning and Zoning in, in that same way also, and to see if we can get them working with FIDA to come up with some, some hybrids, some alternatives to what's presented here. Great. Has any other questions? Well, thank you so much for your work. We really, really, really appreciate this. We'll, you know, we will get this out to all of our community leaders and community organizations, see if we can bring some light, some attention to this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, council, we'll move down to our committee and board reports, Water and Sewer Utilities Committee. We don't have a word on that tonight, no, all right? Property Committee?
We, we met Monday, May 16th here at City Hall. We had several items on the agenda that evening. One that we want to bring to the council is a temporary easement across city property of Larry Paget so that he could construct a home out of Walton Lake. We felt that the plan that he brought is feasible. He's going to lay a heavy rock base to go across the lower waterway area and then do the work he needs to do, and once that's completed, he'll restore that area back to the way it was prior to using it as a crossing. The committee felt that that was, that would be all right, and we're gonna recommend that the full council approve Larry's easement across that particular property.
We wanted that in writing, though, right?
Right. We wanted it in writing, and I think, haven't we got that yet, or?
We've got something set up, and I haven't talked to Larry since.
Okay, okay. So, so then we'll just step back a little bit until that agreement actually shows up on our desks, but it has been approved at the committee level to move that forward. We talked about tower lease requests from NATAL. The tower behind the courthouse is coming down. Their equipment, radio frequency equipment is on that tower right now. They would like to relocate that from its current location over to the B Street Water Tower there behind Holt Family Devil.
Watch out for vultures.
There was, there was no conflict with the current leaseholder for tower space on that water tower, Lisco. They said that there would be no conflict between their equipment and NATAL's equipment. There was a few questions about what type of upgrades would be needed at that location for those particular radio frequency towers that they're going to put up there. And that would be picked up by NATAL according to what was talked about at the meeting. At this point, we haven't got a full agreement, and we need to have that on hand before we can actually propose that this actually all goes through fruition. The next item we had was our compost site regulations. We've had a problem with contractors coming in and dumping in our compost area out on South 22nd Street, 20th Street, South 20th Street. And what they're doing is they're bringing their material in and dumping in, into that area, and then that causes us to have to use tub grinders earlier and more frequently because the volume and material that a contractor would bring in is usually larger than what a property owner would be. The compost site was set up initially for residents to be able to bring their yard waste and small trimmings and that kind of thing out to that site. It's been successful that way, but there have been a few that want to take advantage of that in different ways, and so we're trying to figure out a way to come down on that a little bit harder. I believe letters were suggested to be sent out to all of the contractors that do landscaping and, and tree trimming and that kind of thing to remind them that they are not to be able to dump anything there, but they do have the ability to go out and load up as much mulch as they want to in any vehicle that they have to take away from the site. And that's similar to what the residents get, but the city doesn't feel that they need to subsidize a private contractor in the operation of their business just because we allow property owners to do that thing here as well. So we're moving in that direction. There isn't gonna be any action needed by the council. Daryl made a homemade sign the last time around out there, and he volunteered to try to modify it a little bit to meet more of what we're trying to target, and Katie was gonna help work on that with him as well. So when that gets taken care of, I'm sure we'll get a preview of the new sign. We also had a update on nuisance and mowing and vacant homes. We found that there is approximately 11-plus homes that sit vacant year-round here in Fairfield, some of which have been vacant for more than five years. And it's a pretty, pretty bad problem. We need some more investigation on that. We had, we had a stack of about this tall of mowing violations already that need to be taken care of around town. People need to remember that their yards are not supposed to be more than 12 inches tall and that they do need to get out and mow and clean things up.
Six.
Well, 10, okay. I was closer than six. Anyway, 10 inches tall. And, and we have a, we have a fairly substantial problem with that. If you drive around Fairfield, you can go through one neighborhood that looks absolutely nice, you know, four-inch-tall yards, the whole nine yards, but you go two blocks in any direction, and you run into yards that haven't been mowed yet this year. So we're already starting our city crews going out and attacking some of those, and then we'll get those put onto at least property taxes if we can't collect from the homeowner within the specific time period. And the final thing that we addressed was outdoor dining in front of restaurants. It's a change to the dining ordinance that we have right now. We still have some more work to do on that, particularly with the suggestion of parking lot dining, parking stall dining, what they would look like, how they would work, where they would be at, whether they would have electricity or not have electricity, how they would be designed in order to be temporary so that they're not there during the snow season and we can clean up the streets properly. There was also some questions about safety issues that go along with them because we have some higher traffic volume areas. It was agreed that nothing along Burlington would be allowed to have a parking lot, or parking stall dining area.
I think.
Particularly places with parallel parking in front of them, we wouldn't want to allow that at all. Anything that is considered to be along the Highway 1 corridor could not be included in this, so any restaurant that is along there or cafe or whatever, no parking stall dining would be allowed there unless they could get that cleared through the Iowa Department of Transportation. So we're, we're still trying to work on that. We're, we've been doing quite a little bit with it. We've had some concerns from beautification and some other groups here in the community about that style of dining, not so much on the sidewalk and fenced-in areas there, but when you're trying to take up a parking stall that may or may not be next to a node that has plantings and damaging effects happen to those. So that kind of wraps up what we talked about. If you two have any comments you want to make about that, I would appreciate it.
Well, since that meeting, I met with the, this other committee that's looking at the outdoor dining, Adam Plagie and Terry Baker. We looked at Iowa City's ordinance and were able to get quite a bit of good information from that. So we'll have a new, hopefully close-to-final version ready to, to send out later this week. So we're making progress, but we included a buffer area for those, those parking lot spaces, provides some safety, so, and a few other things. But the Iowa City ordinance was very helpful. They put theirs in place a few years back, and it's worked well for them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your report. Then we'll move to our administrator report and department reports. Mike, do you have anything?
Just a couple of quick items, Mayor. Just a reminder, we have interviews set up with the park and rec candidates this Thursday, so there'll be a meet and greet over the lunch hour. If you're available to come, meet the candidates and have a light lunch. We'll also have one candidate that's coming in tomorrow. I plan to have him back around 11:30. If you have a chance in your schedule, stop by City Hall around 11:30 to noon and, and meet that candidate. He will be available then, so if you're available, we'd love to have you.
What time on Thursday?
Thursday from noon to 1:00. Actually, I'm sorry, 11:30 to 12:30.
Here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And Melanie, you have a project report for us, please.
Depends, is Michael or Katie gonna win out?
Um, so just a couple of that I'll point out unless you have any questions. I can't remember if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I was able to go up to Cedar Rapids and watch the contractor for the step-one work, and I think they will do a very good job. They were putting in, they were doing a similar project up in Cedar Rapids, and it was nice to talk with them as well as the city for about a day on what the sewer project will be like. On the facade project, I do not have a start date on that yet, but I will be working on that, or working with Curtis Architecture over the next couple of weeks on getting some of those loose ends set up. And then we are, we've got several projects from last year that are still not finished, but I am glad to say that Third Street was seeded last week, so hopefully that gets growing and we can close out that project. I mentioned in there that there's a few items that I need to talk with the street department and Mike about how to handle, since Third Street was Shipley's project, some, we may handle things a little bit differently, but I'll talk with them in the next couple of weeks as well. Are there any questions?
I just have one question on the facade. Have you had any feedback after the new bid came in from any of the property owners?
Um, the mayor has had some feedback from one, and I am going to be meeting with him tomorrow to discuss the, the changes in the budget. The rest of it, the, the other property owners that were over, I've, I've left that up to Curtis to meet with them, and I know they've met with two of them, but I have not heard their feedback on how that worked. And then the Elks are looking at a grant application to help fund their overage.
Great. Thanks, Melanie. Yeah, keep, keep me posted also, any of the, you know, I can help with in that area, I'm happy to do. Great. Thank you. Council, I, I wanted to just, before we adjourn, follow up on a point that you made, Darren, in, in your report about nuisances. You know, one of the other things that came out of this report, when you looked at the percentages of ownership versus rentals in the town, and we understand that, you know, the, the type of community we have, it's a little bit higher here, but again, if somebody owns an investment property, a rental, with just mowing alone, there are different ways that they handle it. Either the owner handles it themselves, or it's something that is part of the responsibility of the renter, renter, and there's something that, there's a gap there. Among, you know, among other things, among generally not taking the same sort of pride in ownership, and I think what we have to recognize as a city is because we are in this, you know, situation, we should look at our rental inspection, again, a little bit more closely to see if there is a little bit more pressure to bear, restrictions or accountability from some of these owners to, to keep their, their properties well. And I'm, maybe I'm wrong to make the assumption that some of these nuisance properties that you're mentioning are, are rental properties, but I know that's one of the things that, that we're challenged with. And I think that, you know, we don't really have too much recourse to deal with that until something happens, but through the inspection process, if we, you know, if we ask that, that we understand what the written mowing policy is, or the exterior upkeep of a building, those kinds of things, if, if tenants are responsible, it might be good for us to have those things on record.
Well, if, if something like that, like that in writing exists between a tenant and landlord, that would be fine, but sometimes those are done on a wink and a handshake, and that's not necessarily good business practice. Ultimately, the full responsibility needs to come back on the owner of the property, and if the city goes out and does that, then they can bill that back to that property owner's particular property tax bill at the end of the year. So we are actually getting it from the owner, and it's back on the owner to go back to whatever agreement.
Sure. Well, we should be dealing with the owners for an issue like that, so I, my, the thinking is to just put, put the onus on the owner and to be sure that, that we know what, what is expected there.
Yeah, I would be, I would be open to suggestions on how to, how to do that, other than the way that we're doing. than the way that we're doing it now, that we go out and we'll do it, and then bill the property owner, and then if there's any dispute, we don't have to deal with between the renter and the property owner, that he said, you said, she said, we're gonna, kind of thing, and we deal directly, straight with the property owner. Again, even if that property owner is somewhere in another country here in the world, they still own that property here, and they're still responsible for it like any other owner that's in this community.
Agreed. Anyway, if that comes up again, I think that would be one, one other area to talk about through our inspection process to see if we can hold them more accountable that way.
Yep. Again, I'm open to any suggestions.
Okay. So an entertaining motion to adjourn?
Move to.
Moved by Revolinsky, seconded by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meaning adjourn.